Good evening. I'd like to call to order the council meeting for April 10. Clerk could please call the rule.
Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor.
President.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are eight members present at quorum, and we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
At this time, is there anyone that would like to be recognized for meditation? Yes, Councilmember Hussein.
Yes, I'd ask that people remember the friends and the family of, and of course, the individuals, there Lena Jones, she was a longtime city employee, did pass March 29th. So again, please keep her, family and friends in your thoughts and prayers tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, if we could please rise. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, just as for all.
You have for your approval the council proceedings of March 13th and March 27th?
Vice President, excuse me, Vice President Garza.
Okay, I'd move the minutes of the March 13th, 2023.
Have a motion on the minutes for March 13th. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the proceedings of March 27th, 2023.
Have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Garza for consideration of late items.
Suspension of council rule number nine is needed to allow the consideration of late items. Oh, sorry. The resolution for a transfer of ARPA funds for the hotel housing vouchers.
Okay, we have a motion, and this is for referral only. It is already on the agenda. This is a referral from the mayor, and so suspension of the rule. All those in favor of suspending the rule for a late item referral, say aye. Aye. Pose, passes unanimously. This will be taken up at the appropriate time on the agenda.
Okay, we are to special ceremonies, and we're actually adding, we're pulling forward, there's an appointment resolution, so we're going to pull that forward as our first special ceremony. It's the appointment of Mohammed Kawi II to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board.
Okay, with that, Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Mohammed, he came in front of our Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee meeting last week. Great guy, well-known around the Lansing area. He served in the United States Army. He is the president of UA Local 491 at Sparrow Hospital. Guy's been doing a lot of stuff for our community, and I'm more than happy to appoint him today. And you have my full support, sir, so if you could come down, see if you have your family with you, please bring them with you, and our city clerk will get you sworn in.
So we have a motion to approve. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose, passes unanimously. Thank you. What a beautiful family.
This way, or?
Right out there. We'll see you on the screen.
Okay. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board Member.
Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, now we have Consumers Energy Industrial Development District and Personal Property Tax Exemption requests for 7,000 North Canal presentation.
Okay, if we can have our people from Consumers Energy come down, and we'll let Councilmember Spitzley introduce them, and then they can make their presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. What the presentation today is about, we all know that Consumers Energy, their location is off of Turner Street right now. I'm sorry, it's Willow. That was my mistake, Willow.
Same end of town, but yeah.
Yes, but they are moving outside of the Lansing city proper. And so what this is, is they're proposing a Consumers Energy Industrial Development District and Personal Property Tax Exemption request for their new location for 700 North Canal Street. Let's see. I don't know what else I can say. I'll let you guys continue.
All right, can you hear me all right?
All right, yes, if you, yep.
All right, thank you very much, council, and good evening. I'm joined by Brad Crable of Consumers Energy. I am Chris Klein from Lansing ADC. So we prepared a short presentation just to go over the project itself, provide a summary, and then to look at a timeline. We were asked at committee to provide a broken-out, rough timeline of the proposed project, and then also the taxing impact of the request for the 328 personal property tax exemption. So with that, I think, do we have the presentation up?
Not yet.
All right, well, we can go ahead and get started. All right.
Faith, do you have the presentation ready?
Does the council members have a copy of the presentation? Yeah, okay, I'll send it to you if you want. I don't have it.
This is, this is, okay. It was sent to Dominic, so whether Faith got it or not, I don't know. It's part of this new communication.
Well, the real visuals would probably be the timeline and the tax impact, which are later down in the slides.
All right.
So if you can provide a project summary.
Yep.
Hello, I'm Brad Crable. I'm the Director of Real Estate Acquisition for Consumers Energy. And we've been here before talking about our new utility center we're looking to build in Windsor Township at 7,000 North Canal Road in Diamonddale. We worked through the 425 agreement with this body, and happy to be part of the City of Lansing now. We'll be supporting office and field crew from this facility, both for the delivery of electric and national gas service to the greater Lansing area. The service center will replace our existing facility on Willow Street. That location's been there since about 1957. The new investment that you'll see in our application for the 328 is approximately 28 million. The new investment in personal property each year will be about 875,000. The new facility right now is slated to be about 100,000 square feet and retain approximately 200 employees at that location. Now, following the construction of the new service center, consumers will begin work to demolish the existing Willow Creek location, and then going through the remediation process to clean that property up from the remnants of the former manufactured gas plant that was on-site from the early 1900s until, you know, right before the service center was built in 1957.
Yeah, so just to provide a brief overview of the exemption request, since I don't believe there's been one before this body in quite some time. So this is a personal property tax exemption. It's for new investments in personal property, and this includes office equipment, computers, equipment, and the like. So any existing or relocated personal property from this Willow Street location will not be exempted from taxes. So like many of the tax abatements that we've had before you, there are two steps to this process. It's establishing a district, and then the application for certificate. And so both of those require two separate processes and approvals. So in this case, the district is the same location for the site being applied for the exemption. So there are a few different criteria for a 328 exemption. So there's the local and district eligibility, which would be an eligible distressed area, and it's within an industrial development district is the one being requested to be set. And then the applicant eligibility in this case would be for office operations. The term of the exemption is the, mirrors the same term as the 425, and that's 25 years.
And we do have it in front of us now, so.
Okay. So Consumers Energy worked closely with the City of Lansing and Windsor Township to create the terms of the 425, and these being as mutually beneficial as possible. And this includes the sharing of tax revenues. So the new site will have a sharing of tax revenues collected on the site, including the City of Lansing millage, as well as the income tax, which is key, retaining those employees within City of Lansing as far as paying income taxes. And so the request for the 328 is to offset some of the costs of the project. And the intent to pursue the 328 was part of the 425 language. So wanted to be upfront with that request. And so over the 25 years of the requested exemption, the relocated, the relocation, it's projected to be revenue neutral, or possibly even better, for the City of Lansing. Estimated tax revenue to the city from the new site will be greater than the projected decline of revenue from the Willow Street facility.
So I know the timeframe was of particular interest to the council, and 2022 is when the 425, of course, was approved. We're looking for the 328 approved this year with the process we're in now. And the new site construction, we are scheduled to start the site of construction for the building in 2024, but there are plans, and we would like to start construction of some of the infrastructure later this year. The new site operations is scheduled for 2026. As soon as those individuals and equipment are moved offsite, we'll be able to execute the demolition process for the existing Willow Street site, and then start the remediation. Working with the Eagle and other regulatory bodies, we're looking for that remediation to be complete by 2032, and then available for redevelopment by 2033. And we're looking forward to working with the city to find a great reuse of that property going forward. And then, of course, as you can see, the end of the 425 does coincide with the end of the 328 in 2048.
Okay. I have Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Spatafor, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, President Wood. Thank you for being here today. I spoke with, I think, Jessica on this matter before, and we have your estimated tax revenue sheet here now. And so I'm just trying to make sure that I understand this, that currently you are paying personal property tax on the Willow Center. And then you're asking for an exemption, but you're saying the total revenue for the city really wouldn't change?
I can go through right now. I have some points to address that might be helpful. I know that there's other questions, though, and I.
Go ahead.
I'll try to get through this very quickly. You'll notice the dates don't necessarily align. They're not all 25 years. So I followed the timeline that was provided in the previous slide, as well as giving like five-year intervals, just to show some of the impact there. And this is the transition of, from the Willow site to the new site, and showing the taxes that are collected. This is representative of just the City of Lansing portion, and it shows real and personal property taxes. I did not include employee income tax, individual income tax. Those are likely to remain the same, so it wouldn't really matter which location. But just to point out, that is the largest share of taxes collected from the company. Kind of dwarfs the real and personal property taxes currently collected. So the income tax retained over the 25 years is estimated, with annual increases of 3%, based on the current collection, is about $8.4 million. So that's much greater than the estimate of the property taxes, which is around $5 billion. So I just wanted to point that out, but that's not reflected here. And so what this shows is the real property tax that's currently being paid for both buildings and land at the current site, and then the personal property taxes currently located on Willow. So you see that's roughly 110,000. And then you have the share of the real property tax on the new service center site, that is just the current land, that it's vacant. That's going to be improved via the project. And so you can see it, you know, increases annually as they maintain that. And then you see some changes here once they start to invest in the project. And, you know, about a year delay as taxable values increase. So 2026, you see those increases go up. That's going to be kind of a bit of a jump because you have existing operations, the building still being in place, the personal property still being in place at Willow, as well as the new service center being well underway. And then really after that, you see 2027, expected to have the building on, at the Willow location demolished, and then the personal property moved. So that relocated personal property, we estimate at roughly 50%. So you can see those taxes will be paid because it's not new personal property. And the jump there, you can see it increases significantly with the new site, even exempting completely the new personal property investment. So I have some other figures here. The total personal property tax is exempted, again, City of Lansing only. We're looking at roughly 650,000 over the course of 25 years. That's regular investments, I believe, $825,000. It'll ultimately depend on the mix of equipment that's purchased. There's different depreciation and everything. But that's the expected impact over the entire course of that 25 years. Overall, the benefit is roughly about $2.35 million. So smaller share there, just the City of Lansing. The estimate for the real property value, the taxable value of the new building, I use the most conservative value I could come up with, to be honest. We worked with the assessor's office. We looked at evaluations and comparable properties. Went with roughly $7 million, 6.95 million for the taxable value of the new site, and that's the numbers that are reflected here on the chart. It could be as much as 30% higher, around $9 million. Ultimately depend again on what's constructed. So I just wanted to point that out, that this is kind of stress test to show that there is benefit there, even at a more conservative taxable value. And then I guess that's all I can cover unless there's any questions.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Brown? Okay, Councilmember Spatafor, then Councilmember Spitzley.
Thanks, Chris. I have a question for you regarding the site. Maybe it's for you as well. Is it, is Brad, did you say? Yeah, okay. I'm looking at your numbers between 2027 and 2048, assuming 39, $20,000 to $40,000 in real property on the Willow site. Correct me if I'm wrong, we're not, it's not going back to green space. That's going to be Brown's? Will that be eligible for brownfield in the future?
That's a great question. Likely, there is going to be some remediation, I believe, to commercial standards on that site. So that's going to take several years, and if you, so 2033, I pointed out here, Willow site potentially being available for redevelopment. I think remediation right now is scheduled to be completed by 2032. We didn't include any future investment in that site, any future redevelopment. So that could also be additional taxes to the city, depending on what programs or assistance that might be needed. But it would ultimately be, I mean, I guess I'll leave that of Consumers Energy, but be available for redevelopment.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Spatafor?
It answers a question.
A question.
And I don't mean that to be negative. I just, I'm curious about the reality of the latter half of this chart. You got to pull out the real property tax because it's my assumption that while I won't be sitting at this table, someone will be asked for a tax abatement when this site is sold. But, okay, I'm good with the PPT exemption. I'm just curious about the final numbers in the chart. Thank you.
And that's fair. So this is just essentially the vacant land, and there is still considerable value there. But depending on the program that's utilized, it might be a base taxable value where that would at least be maintained. So if it is a brownfield, it could maintain that, and then any increment above that could potentially be used to reimburse or offset eligible activities.
Well, Carolyn, 2033, you remember that.
Okay, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So I want to talk about, a little bit about your timeline. And you said that it won't be until 2033 till you're ready for redevelopment? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, so you're, so are you not going to be marketing the property at all until 2023? Or are you going to be, and is that, and is that because the remediation will still be going on?
Yes, that is exactly right. The remediation will be going on from, you know, demolition is part of the remediation. So from the start of demolition all the way through when that's available for redevelopment, there'll be activities going on onsite to restore the site to those commercial standards. We've already had.
Industrial standards or commercial standards?
Commercial standards. We've already had meetings with the economic development team from the city, as well as some of the regional economic development partners touring the facility. So we really look forward to a partnership and making sure that there's something there by the time it's ready for redevelopment. And I think that from the city and all the discussions we've had, that, from city staff, that was their interest as well, and we definitely look forward to partnering on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Seeing none, we want to thank you very much for being down here this evening.
And we are to comments by council members and the city clerk.
Are there comments by council members? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. Just wanted to invite everybody to our monthly Fourth Ward Constituent Contact Meeting every fourth Saturday at Gregory's Restaurant, which is 2510 North MLK. Talk about anything Fourth Ward and City of Lansing related. Starts at 10 o'clock, and it will be this fourth Saturday, which is April 22nd, 10 o'clock at Gregory's. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other council member comments? Councilmember Garza?
Trying to find it right now, sorry.
Okay, I can call on somebody else while you're looking for it. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to acknowledge that we received the correspondence. Everybody should have it on their table here. So I'm acknowledging that we received the correspondence, and that's all I'm gonna, that's all I'm able to do is acknowledge it. I think the city attorney needs to talk on the piece of correspondence that we have here.
Well, it involves civil litigation that is ongoing with motions pending in federal court. If you want to deal with it, I suggest that maybe the president should refer to Kau or to a committee that we can answer any questions that may be raised in the letter. And I haven't read the whole letter, but I know the topic. In closed session, we could do that if that's within the will of this council.
So is it something that, I mean, I don't, and then that was my question, because we have it. We can't talk about it in open session because we're in litigation. So I did want to acknowledge that we have it, but what to do with it?
We can discuss this in closed session. I mean, we, you know, we do active litigation with council in closed session, and it's been confidential information, and we can just make this part of it.
Okay, I think, I think we should. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council, Vice President Garza.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So I just want to remind you guys, this April 30th is "I Love My City", and that is an effort that's put on by the South Church of Nazarene. So it says, "Join South Naz as they serve their neighbors. Help a neighbor mow their lawn, pick up trash along the side of the road, pay for someone's coffee in the car behind you. The opportunities are endless, and the ways you can give back to the city that we all love." So see you April 30th as we step outside and serve our neighbors and love our city. And that's at 10 a.m. at the Church of South Nazarene on West Holmes.
Okay. Are there other, Councilmember Hussein?
Sure, I wanted to thank folks that came out to our constituent contact meeting this past Saturday. At the L. Frieda Smith South Side Community Center, we had Mr. Joe Borkstrom in from Placing and Main Advisors. He has been contracted with, or I should say his firm's been contracted with to come up with a redevelopment strategy for the Lower Square. And that redevelopment strategy for the contract is actually due in June of this year. So we had an opportunity to hear about where they're at. And a lot of, a lot of what they are looking to do is they're taking, obviously, market realities, they're taking economic leakage studies, they're taking ownership desires, wants, things of that nature, but also public input. So provided this really good opportunity for public input. There's also a survey that they're hoping folks will fill out, so I'll give the link to that in just a minute. But I wanted to thank them. I also wanted to thank Mr. Ben Shaldner from the Lansing School District that was there to talk about some additions to the Lansing pathways, also there to talk about, you know, some positives with regards to graduation rates and the like. So we certainly appreciate him being there as well. I also wanted to announce Rejuvenating South Lansing will be holding it. I also wanted to announce Rejuvenating South Lansing will be holding its monthly meeting April 25th. That'll be at 6:30 PM at the L. Frieda Schmidt South Side Community Center at 5825 Wise Road. As always, they meet in the Sandy Allen Room. My understanding is that they will have first, a fire inspector from the Fire Marshal's Office to speak to the new fire detector program. And then as always, that will follow up with an hour-long power meeting, where there's a number of city council updates and South Lansing updates and the like. Lastly, with regard to the survey, if folks are interested, questions on the survey, I'll just give you a couple of examples. In your opinion, what types of businesses would you like to see at Logan Square? In your opinion, what types of businesses should not be at the Logan Square? What physical changes or amenities would you like to see? If you could change one thing about the Logan Square, what, what would it be? And then there are others that are among that variety. So in any event, the link is www.surveymonkey.com backslash R backslash Logan Square. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other councilmember comments? At this time, I wanted to inform council and the public that as of Tuesday, we will have our first live streaming committee meeting. We finally have the equipment working that will be in the conference room. It will be at the top of the council, the committee agendas on YouTube to where you can go and watch a committee meeting, either during the time that it is actually happening or at a, another time when it's convenient for you. But you will now start to see all of our committee meetings. So we want to thank city TV for finally helping us get that up and going. Well, I want to reach out and thank councilmember Hussein who started this project, and we're glad to be able to say that it is now moving forward and that we look forward to having that on a regular basis, as long as everything keeps flowing. We really appreciate that. Was that councilmember Cost?
Thank you, President Wood. Just real quick, I wanted to remind everybody that the B. Christie Awards deadline for a nomination has been extended until Friday. So if you know someone that has been a, a leader in, in the community of some kind or made a difference, please fill out a application for them so they can be nominated. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, President Wood. I do want to announce that two weeks from tomorrow at 4:00 PM is the deadline to file for the four city council positions that are up for election this year. We have two at-large seats to be elected, as well as the first and third wards. So again, 4:00 PM, two weeks from tomorrow, and you can contact my office by calling 311 or stop in. You can file with a filing fee of $100, so people can file in one stop if they choose. The other alternative is to collect petition signatures. It's up to the candidate to make that determination how they want to file. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience with a community event that you would like to announce, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details.
The Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries is hosting a hands-on tombstone cleaning workshop in Mount Hope Cemetery on Sunday, April 30th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. If you have ever wanted to know how to clean monuments or markers without doing any harm, this workshop is for you. The do-no-harm techniques taught follow the cemetery conservators' four United Standards methods, and the workshop will be led by Andrew Nolan of Silent Cities, a restoration and preservation specialist. You'll learn how to clean, when to clean, and how you can legally clean. Supplies will be provided for the tombstone cleaning experience, but we suggest that you bring your own disposable gloves and a folding chair. You can register online to guarantee your spot, and the fee is $20 if registered in advance, $25 by check or cash on the day of the event. You can register at our website, F-O-L-H-C@wildapricot.org. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community events? All right, seeing none, I do want to announce that if you want to speak for public comment on legislative matters, then now is the time to sign up. We'll give you about another 30 seconds. And legislative matters does include the public hearings, which are items three through six, and then the items that council will be acting on, which are items seven through 22 this evening. Again, jump up and grab Lauren before she exits the room if you want to sign up. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. We've had, we have a variety of things going on this week that I wanted to share. If you haven't made it to the Capital City Film Festival, I really hope you will. It is incredible. I was there on Thursday. I got to see Sears. I couldn't believe it was still Sears, so go and check it out. The, the studio was incredible. The, the list is on the website for all week, but there's some really good films, and we all know it's an incredible event we do here in our city. Tomorrow night is opening day for our Lug Nuts at 6:00 PM, not 7:00 PM, 6:00 PM, so go nuts. On Wednesday, we have a variety of things. We have a, there's a licensed restoration clinic at Union Missionary Baptist Church from 11:00 to 7:00. You can register on the S, the Secretary of State webpage or walk in, and that's for licensed restoration, so it's a great tool for many of our citizens that need it. We also have our Neighborhood Resource Summit that evening at the Schmidt Center on Wise Road, where you can get all kinds of cool resources, things for neighbors. This is our Third Ward Neighborhood Resource Summit. And then we also have a Lansing Seasonal Career Fair Day on Wednesday, hoping to hire some more seasonals. We certainly don't want to, to be short. I know we were last year with yard waste and a variety of things, and I heard that everywhere. So we certainly want to have plenty of seasonals. So that'll be on Wednesday, and you can go to the website to apply first, and then we'll be doing another one on Saturday, the 22nd, for those who are working on, on Wednesday during the day and want to stop by. Thursday night is the State of the Downtown at 6:00 PM at the NAPS Building, so Kathleen Edgely will share quite a bit of information going on about the state of the downtown. Saturday morning is our mobile food pantry. I neglected to write where it is this time, so I will look that up and get it, unless someone knows, and get it to you for the later comment. April 21st to 22nd is Stoop Fest on the East Side. I know on Friday night, they're gonna be at Hunter Park, and then I assume they're throughout the East Side, but Councilmember Cost probably knows more than I do on this. But it's actually a lot of fun. I've been to that the last few years, and I think I saw you there. So it's a, it's a good time. And then April 22nd is Recycorama with the county, and it's also Earth Day. So that should be a lot of fun. And I know we'll get a lot of questions, you'll get a lot of questions. Yard Waste begins a week from today, on Monday, the 17th. We've had yard waste drop-offs the last two Saturdays at, at our O&M. Not a lot of people took advantage of it, but we had it. And the yard, yard waste collection will begin on Monday, the 17th. So hopefully we don't have too many bags piling up, but we'll be there and, and our folks will be picking up. And that's what I've got. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and as I indicated, that's items seven through 22, as well as the four public hearings. Number three is the industrial development district for Consumers Energy. Number four is the personal property tax exemption for Consumers Energy. Item five is the ordinance to increase the number of members on the principal shopping district board. And number six is the ordinance to increase the maximum contract amount for which a Lansing-based bidder has an opportunity to match the lowest bid.
And we had an explanation during our special ceremony for items three and four. So councilmember Spitzley on item five.
Thank you, Madam President. The Downtown Lansing, Inc. Principal Shopping District Board would like to increase their membership from eight to nine. They're asking for that because of the odd, of the even number and the potential for a tie. And so adding an additional member would give us, give them an odd member of board members, and so you won't have that, that instance of a tie.
Thank you. Councilmember Spatafor, the number six special hearing.
Yes, number six is an ordinance that allows us to increase the maximum contract amount for which a Lansing-based bidder has an opportunity to match the lowest bid from a non-Lansing-based business for city contracts only. So right now, we are allowed to go back to a Lansing-based bidder if they are within $500,000, if the contract's under $500,000, and they can match that at a certain percentage. We're moving that limit from $500,000 to $1 million. In this piece, there is a complimentary resolution that changes the percentage at which they can match that, and that's in the Ways and Means Committee waiting action on this ordinance. So that's what's going on with this ordinance change.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now to the members of the public. We have Loretta Stanaway followed by Erica Lynn.
Okay, first up, Consumers Energy. It really sticks in my craw. I mean, I know all the historical arguments for these things, these tax abatements and whatever, but it really sticks in my craw that a multimillion-dollar profit is realized by this company annually while rate increases hit the consumers continually. And we look at the fact that the Biden administration is apparently conducting a war on natural gas usage. So there are projections for what city residents, who are the only users of, who only use natural gas from consumers, they don't use electric, electricity from consumers, their projections might be very far off. Because if the administration is able to restrict gas stoves, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, their projections are not gonna hold. And we still have to, for 25 years, provide at our expense, fire, police, and other utility services to this project under the 425 agreement. So asking for 100% tax abatement over 25 years does not sit well with me, and I hope you'll look at that closely. And on the second topic, number 16, the purchase of the real estate property for the construction of the Ovation Center, question didn't get asked during their presentation about abating lead paint. I'm, I'm pretty sure there's probably lead paint in that building, which will be another expenditure. We are on the hook with full faith and credit of the city for this if it does not succeed as they expect it to succeed. We have a pretty good, or bad, however you want to look at it, track record of doing things where we expect businesses and entities and projects to have a positive cash flow and reduce or eliminate the subsidies we provide for them. For instance, golf, the Lansing Center, the city market when it was revamped, the Lug Nuts. We're continually told, well, you know, this year we won't have to subsidize as much, or we won't have to subsidy at all. And that hasn't happened. And I'm very concerned that that will be the case in this instant also. We continually get told, oh, you're gonna get a break, we're not gonna have to subsidize this, and then the thing comes along and it's, yeah, but this, yeah, but that, yeah, but something else. I'm afraid we're gonna get another yeah-bot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Eric, Erica Lynn followed by Mike Lynn.
Hello, Erica Lynn, Lansing resident. I just want to talk about agenda item number 10, which I hope that there will be more discussion on, at, at the broad council meeting on setting the public hearing on the 2324 budget. I, I feel like I'm gonna say what the consensus kind of was throughout the entire process that we sat through and committee of the whole, in that I, I have some major concerns that we continue to have such a large deficit year over year. And at this point still, there are no concrete plans to address that, so we're going to go into yet another full year of budget deficit with no actual concrete plans to address it, which again puts us a year behind on anything actually having a formidable positive impact on said deficit. It was also largely concerning to hear, you know, I think everyone knew that, but it was said plainly, there have been no asks of departments to decrease spending. And then to actually hear that some departments are actually setting funds aside, that's ridiculous. I think that if you're in any kind of business mind, that, those are conversations that should always be being had, revisiting things. So that's something that I think that if there's no conversations being had on substantiation of, of a budget, when we know that there is a deficit, that goes for every single department that exists. What damage are we going to do if we adopt, you know, a, a budget with no comprehensive plans to address the deficit, and then we don't have the ARPA funds to save our butts? So I think that it's count, you know, it, you all know what your, your role is, your responsibility is. It is to ensure that the health of our budget is intact long-term. It is sustainable long-term. So with that being said, there is a cycle that we are seeing of a lack of accountability on spending, on raises, on creation of new positions, on adding positions, on having two deputy mayors, without having to substantiate the need for that, especially when we don't actually have the money for that. And knowing that we are on shaky financial ground. So that brings me to the irresponsible nature of the stance that our city attorneys are taking on lawsuits that we are occurring. How much less money, time, and resources could be spent addressing the issues that resulted in the lawsuits? Is there any true cost-benefit analysis being done? So after being left tonight with a lot more budget questions than answers, and a lot of unease on our financial health, when you start having to pay out the guilty verdicts and the settlements, how confident are you in how it is currently being handled?
Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Mike Lynn.
Mike Lynn, Lansing resident. I'm on the same line of questioning or conversation as I sat and listened to the budget hearing. And what I've been coming to this dice and saying over and over and over again is that I've been paying attention since about 2018 in our budget. I remember I had a conversation with one of our ex-council members, and they were talking about the fear that we were in the red back before 2020, it was like 2019, at that moment, that we might possibly not be able to just pay for our firefighters, or our police department, or whatever the case is. And, and 2020 came, the pandemic hit, which we again took a big loss as far as, you know, investment into the community, but parking and everything else, right? But then I just continue, this has been multiple years now they've had no plan to adjust that, or to figure out what's going on with that. I remember in 2019, again, I'll say this today, as I said two weeks ago, they took our P cards from us at, at the fire department because there was this concern of all this overspending, because our general fund was just diminishing. And so I, I tasked it, you all as a council, think about how this money is being spent when, you know, it's just like our mayor stands up here, and, and even, even the remarks from the mayor are always celebratory and like, kind of, you know, having this fun idea that we have. And my wife said one time on the show, you know, when your kid comes and asks you, you know, go outside and play, you ask them first, have you cleaned your room? Have you done your homework? Things along those lines. All of this celebratory fun that we're having in downtown area or everywhere around this city, that stuff costs money. That stuff costs money. Every bit of it costs money. When he speaks, he sounds like an executive director of a nonprofit, explaining to us all the events he's got coming up. And people are starving, and our budget is completely tore up, as they sat here and said today. Every time that I've heard Desiree come up here and speak, and I, and I like Desiree, and I think she's a good person, and she got put in a tough spot, especially with her boss and, and the accountability they try to hide all the time, but she has no idea what's going on with this budget whatsoever. The amount of times that I heard her sit up here and say, I don't know, oh, we're working on that, we've got a budget team that's together, and they've come to find out it's the same people that are gonna hide where the bodies are buried because they're the ones that put them there? This is just irresponsible for a city. What are we doing? And this is your all's budget to take care of. So at the end of the day, don't let this next three weeks be concerning that we gotta hurry up and get this budget out here back to him, because we would just not have a budget, it feels up to me. We just wouldn't be budgeted. If you're not gonna deal with the overspending that we've got, that we've had for the last six years, you're not gonna get a budget from us. And you still gotta deal with that 1.75 million is coming to me. I don't know where that's coming from. And I'll talk about that in the next portion, but that, that, that correspondence you got was from me, and I don't want to keep it a secret. I want it to be as transparent- I want it to be as transparent as possible, especially while we're sitting here talking about budgets. People are saving face on the back of the taxpayers' money, and that's just not okay. A guilty verdict is a guilty verdict. Financially, you're going to have to hold some accountability to that, whether you like it or not.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we are to the referral of the public hearings, number one, item three.
Uh, development and planning.
Item four.
Development and planning.
Item five.
Development and planning.
Item six.
City operations. And before we go, um, any further, I have a request from Councilmember, uh, Spatafor.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. I just wanted to clarify something. During one of the public hearings, it was stated that, um, we are on the hook for police and fire and, and other types of enforcement for the Canal Street property. The last slide of our presentation on that, um, Consumers Energy, that's all taken care by Windsor Township in Eaton County. It's too far from our jurisdiction to be doing that, so we won't be on the hook for that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President, uh, Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move the following items on the consent agenda, the liquor trip license transfer, R Y K Y LLC, DBA Leo's Lodge request for Class C license, and a Sunday sales PM outdoor service entertainment S D M permits at 2525 East Jolly Road. Fireworks display license, that's the Lansing Lug Nuts and Pyrotechno, uh, fireworks incorporated at Jackson Field, 505 East Michigan Avenue on various dates. Setting a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant, the C D B G Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2023, 2024, and setting a public hearing on Fiscal Year 2023, 2024 budget.
And the C B G, uh, hearing is April 24th, and the city, uh, budget is May 8th. Uh, with that, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to resolutions for action. We have item 12, uh, Act One of 2023.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have before us is a request for, um, um, easements. Excuse me, um, this is a, um, continuation of the Red Cedar Development, uh, Continental Ferguson Lansing LLC. Um, they are proposing to formalize easements for multiple forms of encroachment into the city's East Michigan Avenue right of way, um, to continue, um, the construction of the Red Cedar Development. Most of the buildings are done, and the hotel is currently under construction. Um, one of the, the things that of note that if, um, the buildings are removed or the project doesn't go through, um, if the buildings are removed or revert a clause causes, um, the return of the property to the public right of way should be considered. Also that, um, the Red Cedar Development or its successor is to be responsible for the removal of the encroachments if the building is removed. Um, staff recommends approval of these encroachments as proposed to formalize the previously agreed upon temporary licenses for the building right-of-way encroachments. All outstanding work items shall be executed prior to easements being finalized and subject to review and approval as deformed by the city attorney. And with that, I will move the resolution approving the easements.
You have a motion before us. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have before us is, uh, LS dash four dash two oh two three lot split application for 4512 and 4524 Ingham Street. Um, this is, this is a request by the, um, land bank to split, um, these two lots for, um, continued economic development. See if this is the one I wanted to, yes. This one in particular, um, I'm sorry, that's not the right. So, so the Ingham, the Ingham County Land Bank is proposing to split the lots, um, the, uh, on, on, uh, on Ingham Street, um, to, to, um, make it more, um, feasible for redevelopment. Right now, um, the, um, it's, there are two lots, and they're going to split them to make three individual lots. They do not have anybody, um, wanting to purchase the property at this point. We had that, um, situation before, but the land bank does not have anybody, um, on the hook for purchasing it yet, um, but they would like to, um, split them into three lots and make it consistent with the other lots on Ingham Road. With that, I'll pass, I'll, uh, make a motion to pass the resolution.
You have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, LS seven dash 2023 lot split application for 4720 Ballard Road. Um, this is also another, uh, land bank property. Um, one of the, um, specifics or one of the unique things about this is that, um, the resulting parcels will be seventy point five feet wide by three oh five deep, feet deep, um, which, um, the subdivision ordinance restricts the depth of a lot to two point five times, um, the depth. And so it will, it will be a little deeper than, um, the ratio. Um, it, it ends up being, um, a ratio of one to four point three two. However, um, looking at the other properties in the area and the property depth in the area, it is consistent with the property depths on Ballard Road, and thus, um, the, um, the department felt that because it's consistent with other parcels that it was, that it was basically okay. Um, if approved, it'll be one single family, um, it'll be, um, one single-family dwelling will be permitted on each of the two resulting parcels, and so you're going to split the parcel in two, and it'll, it'll, um, allow for, um, additional, um, housing, um, opportunities. And with that, I'll move that resolution as well.
We have a motion before us. Councilmember Spitzley, is that land bank property as well?
They're both land bank property.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry if I didn't say that.
Not, not a problem. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. That takes us to our next one, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. What we're doing here is, and I know this is, this has come by, so we're, we're well familiar with this.
Again and again.
Starting a public hearing on the SLU one dash 2023 special land use permit for 109 East Randolph Street. Um, the initial applicant who, um, came forth, um, did not, um, it did not go through. Their, um, proposal was for up to 20 units, which needed both a zoning and a land use permit. This applicant, um, only, um, needs, uh, is, is all, this applicant is only going to have a maximum of 12 residents, um, and so it's already permitted for up to 12, and so you only needed a special land use permit for this use. Um, one of the, uh, continuing concerns, um, is, uh, parking, and there has been a variance approved for parking, and the Catholic Church next door has, is also in discussions with them and willing to discuss additional parking. Um, the planning, um, unit appeared, the planning unit, um, recommends approval of the request as the proposal seems to be a reasonable use of the property and one which will have the least amount of impact on the surrounding residential neighborhoods in term of traffic, use of on-street parking, and level of activity in general. And with that, I'll move the resolution.
And the public hearing is for what date?
Oh, my goodness, May 8th.
May 8th, thank you. Uh, with that, are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. That takes us to, uh, Vice President Garza.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So number 16 is Act 22 of 2023. Uh, it's a purchase of real property at the northeast corner of South Washington Avenue and Lenawey Street to facilitate the construction of the Public Media Center and Ovation Concert Venue. So the city of Lansing has requested to, uh, acquire the 500 South Washington LLC portions of two parcels. Uh, it's combined into a single parcel prior to transaction, roughly point nine one acres, uh, total in area to facilitate the renovation of an existing structure and construction of a new structure to house the Lansing Public Media Center and the Ovation Music Venue. So an appraisal was made prior to negotiations, beginning with the purchaser, which appraised, returned at, uh, the fair market value of one million seven hundred and forty thousand dollars as of August, uh, 28th of 2022. Uh, the agreed-upon purchase price for the property is not to exceed two million dollars plus closing costs. On March 7, 2023, the planning board reviewed the location, character, and extent of the proposal in accordance with the Act 33 Review Procedure and voted unanimously six to zero to recommend the approval of Act Three, 2023 Purchase of Property. With that, I would move for passage or denial.
We have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Passes, um, seven one. Uh, Vice President Garza.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Number 17, it's a court settlement, Jansen Settlement Agreement to Address the opioid, opioid epidemic. So the city of Lansing filed a lawsuit to address the public nuisance that is opioid epidemic, uh, and which named among other companies the following four defendants, Tiva Pharmaceuticals Industries, L D, L T D, a prescription opioids manufacturer, Alurg, Alurgan Finance LLC, a prescription opioid manufacturer, CVS Health, uh, Corporation, and CVS Pharmacy, a prescription opioid distributor, and Walmart Incorporated, a prescription opioid distributor. So the settling defendants have negotiated proposed national settlement agreements, uh, the proposed settlements with the State Attorney General's Office, uh, whereas the proposed settlement contains significant equitable and monetary relief, including an agreement to pay up to 3.34 billion over the next 13 years by Tiva, uh, up to 2.02 billion over seven years by Alurgan, oh, yeah, I believe that's how you pronounce it, 4.9 billion over the next 10 years by CVS, and 2.74 billion within six years by Walmart. Bulk of, of each of these payments will be dedicated to funding abatement and prevention strategies associated with the opioid public nuisance. So whereas the proposed settlement, each contain a default allocation method where settlement funds that are allocated to a particular state to resolve the claims asserted by state and local governments within the state are allocated as follows. Fifteen percent of the settlement proceeds paid under the proposed settlement are alloc- allocable to the state, fifteen percent of the settlement proceeds are allocable to local governments, and seventy percent of the settlement proceeds are allocable to opioid abatement funds. And with that, I would move for passage or denial.
We have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. And as we remember during our, uh, committee of a whole, this is just agreeing to the settlement. Any appropriations will have to still come back to council. Uh, Councilmember Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move the resolution denying claim 1922 in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars for trash removal fees at 1119 Menmond Street. Uh, this is a red-tagged property. It was purchased by the claimant on the 21st of May, 2021, at the Ingham County Tax Sale. The claimant did contact the code officer on 1210, 2021 regarding the violation on the property. However, by then, the work had already been completed. You'll note the photos are from the 12th, the 8th, the 9th, and the 10th of December 2021, uh, when Eric's refuse was dispatched to clean up the trash. We were contacted, again, as I mentioned, on that day by the claimant stating they could not make it home in time to clean up. They were out of state in New Jersey where they actually live. Did appeal to, um, the Committee on Operations, and while, um, the, the property owner did object to the amount, they did not deny that the trash was removed from their property. So therefore, I would suggest we deny the, the appeal.
All right, we have a motion to deny the claim. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Uh, that takes us to Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. So this, uh, resolution pertains to orders to make safer demolish to the owners of property located at 651 East Jolly Road. Uh, the current owner is listed as Carol, Carolyn Inglehart Smith Living Trust. Uh, state equalized value is forty-seven thousand eight hundred. The cost of repairs, uh, have been estimated at about seventy-five thousand. Uh, this home was originally red-tagged back in, uh, December of 2018. Uh, we did enter it into demo in 2022. This went before the demo board, uh, September of 2022, and they did eventually issue a 60-day make-safear demolish. Uh, during that time, there was no contact from the ownership. Uh, there was no building, no electrical, no mechanical, no, uh, no demo permits pulled. Uh, and so this was referred to council for action, uh, early this year. Uh, we did have a show cause hearing on March 27th. No one was present to show cause as to why we shouldn't move forward, uh, with, uh, the make-safear demolish process. Uh, this went back to, uh, public safety on, uh, March 4th. Again, no one showed, uh, nor was anyone, uh, with city government contact about this property. Uh, no permits still had been pulled to date, uh, and no work has been done. So with that being said, I would move for resolution.
All right, we have a resolution before us for make-safear demolish. Are there any questions at this time? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. And at this time, I will pass the gavel. You recognize me?
Sorry, I recognize that Councilwoman Wood, but, uh, Chair, has passed the gavel to Vice Chair.
Okay, um, before us, we have a resolution, um, from the mayor. Um, we, in the, uh, American Rescue Plan, um, dollars, we had allocated, uh, one million dollars that went, uh, to finance, um, for, uh, BSNA software. Um, that came in, um, less than the one million dollars. There was one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars left. Also, there were, um, two hundred thousand dollars that were given to finance, um, to hire a contract manager for the ARPA funds, and there's forty-one thousand dollars, um, currently left, um, in that, so that gives us a total of two hundred thousand dollars. And the recommendation is to move this to H R C S for temporary hoteling, uh, to prevent homelessness. As we all know, uh, part of the discussion that we had during our special, uh, council meeting had to do with the fact we needed to make sure that we had funds, um, to complete the year for those, um, types of services. This helps whether we're talking about people that, um, have, uh, red-tagged or whether we're talking about homeless. So, uh, this is a resolution, uh, for those transfers for that particular purpose. And with that, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we got a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, and we are to ordinances for introduction and setting of public hearing. Uh, we have the following ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, uh, to amend the Code of Ordinances by providing for the rezoning of a property located in the city of Lansing, Michigan for the re- revision of the district maps adopted by Section 12, 42.02 of the zoning ordinance for property located Z1, 2023, 4111 Aurelius Road from MX1 Neighborhood Mixed Use Center to R2 Suburban Detached Residential, is, uh, was introduced by the Committee on Development and Planning, read a first time by its title, and refer to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So what happened here is when we went to the, um, uniform, um, coding, um, the site was rezoned to, um, MX1, um, uh, Neighborhood Mixed Use from, you know, residential, and it is currently, um, zoned as such. The house, um, is basically, the house that's there right now is basically non-conforming. Um, one of the issues is if the house was burned over fifty percent, it would not be able to be rebuilt. Also, um, you know, if you wanted to expand the home and do some other things to the home, you would not be able to do that because of the current zoning. Selling the house would be difficult because no one wants, you know, the, the, it's non-conforming, so if they wanted to do any work on the house, they even wanted to put a deck or something like that on the house, um, it would not be permitted under the current, uh, zoning. Um, this is the only house, um, impacted, um, in this area as such, and so, um, the planning department has recommended- And so the planning department has recommended that we set a public hearing for May 8th to rezone just this piece of property from MX Neighborhood Mixed Use to R2 Suburban Detached Residential. With that, I'll move the resolution setting the public hearing for May 8th.
We have a resolution before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Okay, we have another ordinance for introduction, and the council rules say I have to read it by title, so hold your breath.
Go for it.
Just don't mess up the number.
The following ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan for amending the Code of Ordinances by providing for the rezoning of property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, and for the revision of the district maps adopted by Section 1242.02 of the zoning ordinance for property located at Z3, 2023. This is a request by H, Inc., to rezone 818-820-908-914, May Street, 817-821-823-827-843, and 903 East Saginaw Street, 711-713-7140, 717-7180, 721-722-723-724-725-727, East Park Terrace, 709-713-714-718-717-721-722-725-729, Quaker Court, and 711-715-721-727-737, North Pennsylvania Avenue from our MX Residential Mix to DT2 Urban Flex was introduced by the Committee on Development and Planning. Read it first time by its title and refer to the Committee on Development and Planning.
I'm sorry, what? What'd you say? Who wasn't listening?
Yeah, Mike was mine. Okay, with that, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So what this is, is, you know, a multiple, multiple properties, and the majority of them are owned or controlled by Harry Hepler of H, Inc. to rezone all that Chris, that the clerk said, from RX Mixed Residential Mix to DT-2 Urban Flex. The purpose of the rezoning is to permit a multiple-family residential development of up to 240 units in the area bounded by Pruden Street to the west and North Pennsylvania Avenue to the east. The property, the project will be developed in phases as the applicant continues his efforts to obtain more properties in the area. He does have a large number of properties already and is working on getting control of additional properties. The planning unit has, the planning department has recommended approval of this. And with that, I'll move the resolution to set the public hearing for May 8th.
A motion in front of us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's the Yellow Sheet. And if you want, if you haven't had an opportunity to sign up, we'll give you about another 10 seconds to jump up and grab Lauren's attention. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Make a motion that all items be considered as being written full and the proper referrals be made by the president.
Have a motion before us. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
We have items from the clerk, minutes of boards and commissions.
Placed on file.
And Tri-County Office on Aging Annual Implementation Plan.
Development and planning.
From the mayor, Lansing Economic Development Corporation Annual Report.
Committee of the Whole and placed on file.
Two items relative to the makesafe or demolish at 1020 Woodbine Avenue.
Public safety.
Two items relative to makesafe or demolish at 318 Clifford Street.
Public safety.
Two items relative to makesafe or demolish at 1309 West Chihuahua Street.
Public safety.
The appointment of Caitlin O'Rourke to the Board of Public Service.
City operations.
The appointment of David Washburn to the Local Development Finance Authority.
Development and planning.
Wet Weather Control Program Project Plan Approval.
City operations.
Grant application for the Michigan Natural Resources Trust funds.
Ways and Means and internal auditor.
Court settlement that was acted on earlier for the master settlements.
Committee of the Whole and placed on file.
Soul Source Purchase for the Public Service Department and quest, request for Wonderware as the vendor for wastewater division SCADA software.
Ways and Means and internal auditor.
And the transfer that was acted on earlier relative to the ARPA funds.
Placed on file.
We have a claim appeal, claim number 1931, Guan and Jack Johnson for $1,127 in trash fees at 3308 Maloney.
City operations.
And a communication from Mary Rosenberg regarding changed traffic signal at Genison and Saginaw.
Public Safety Committee.
And we are to remarks by councilmembers.
Are there any councilmember remarks? Seeing none?
Remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shaw.
I had mentioned the mobile food distribution. It is this Saturday, April 15th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Lansing Catholic Central, 501 Marshall Street. So please share that information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to public comment on city government-related matters. We have Stan Shuck followed by Nicholas Zandi.
Good evening. Stan Shuck, South Lansing, Route 19. I want to talk about that chip sealing. You guys, a few months ago, you had Andy Kilpatrick down here blowing smoke up just about everything you could imagine. And he said he would wait till spring to get this cleaned up. Well, it's spring. And these chip sealed areas, everything that wasn't locked down from the freeze thaw has absolutely came loose. It's twice as bad as it ever was. Went to my chiropractor out in East Lansing the other day, and he brought it up to me because they did the same thing in Meridian Township out in Okemos. He asked me how I came out on it, and I said it's still kind of an ongoing issue. Said it's so bad out there, they had a township meeting, and they're going to blacktop everything that this company chip sealed out there just because of the absolute disastrous job they did. It's destruction of public property in millions, in the millions of dollars throughout this city. Brian, you need to come out and look at this area in the fourth ward. You gotta see this. With the big rain, it's all washed into the catch basins. They're full. The intersections are now flooding when it rains. I mean, this is ridiculous. We're talking millions of dollars. I got a copy of the PowerPoint, how much every area costs. This is ridiculous. It's gotta be made right. And what is the cleanup going to cost the public service department? These streets are going to have to be swept curb to curb. Every area that was chipped, curb to curb, not just down the gutter pan and they're out of there. It's going to have to be cleaned up. What is that going to cost public service in their limited budget? And, you know, like they asked you, well, just give them the money and they'll decide how they spend it. They'll let you know. They'll let you know where it's going. Well, you got three sweepers. They're all up and operating. They need to be prioritized on these areas, just like Andy said they would be. I mean, this is ridiculous. And you talk about your personnel issues and your vacancies. Go to the PowerPoint. I challenge you, anyone, to go to, go to the portal right now. I did it while I was sitting here. There's 15 jobs on there, 15. Some of them are after-school tennis people. There's one job at ONM, a 400 maintenance worker. One out of all those vacancies. And the reason you're not filling them is because you're using that money in other areas. And are the seasonals hired that the compost fee pays for, that we've paid for for years? It's a fee. It's covered. It cleans the sewers. It sweeps. You know, it does the leaf pushing. We're not getting any of that. Where is that dedicated money going? There needs to be some accountability. That's what the fee is based on. If you can't fulfill it, redo the fee to the services that we're getting. Show us the cost. Plain and simple.
Thank you.
Next is Nicholas Zandi, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Okay, well, you all know me, but if some of you don't, my name is Nicholas Zandi. I'm from the second ward. And I'm here to speak on something that I was sadly not here to talk about last week. And that is the redlining crisis in our city. This has been getting way out of hand, and it hasn't been addressed by the city for years until it was too late. All this shows is not only how terrible most landlords are at maintaining their own property, but it also shows how the management has been, how incompetent the management has been in order to keep them in check and prevent the crisis from happening in the first place. We need to do something about this right now because we can't let any more houses deteriorate and leave more people without houses to live in at the result of them being red-tagged. And I'm still not happy about the city, what the city did with Ms. Norris and the fledge and their cease and desist letter, showing just how corrupt the city is. That's all I really need to say, and I shall yield the rest of my.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Loretta Stanaway, followed by Daniel K. Arnold.
Okay, this is just a little bit of heads up for when you get to the rezoning of May, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, streets. That's Harry Hepler. He owns the motor wheel lofts. He owns the Pruden lofts. He's looking at buying out essentially an entire high-visibility city block, prime real estate in the city. It looks to me, from what I could see on the maps, like there are 35 addresses and 25 existing structures, which he would presumably be demolishing to put up his new facility. 240 units, sounds really good. But what you need to do before you go too far with this is look at what he has realistically done with the motor wheel lofts and the Pruden lofts. Are they being maintained? Are they being rented? Is he getting a tax break still? Is he getting brownfields or abatements of any kind? Is he going to be asking again for more of those? And how does it show what he's done with the existing buildings, what his predictions would be for what he would do with new ones? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Daniel K. Arnold, followed by Mary Rosenberg.
Hello, everybody. This is Daniel Arnold, Facebook guy smiley. Really happy to be here before the city. And I'm just, as always, I'm just thankful for all your hard work and everybody out here who's just doing the best they can to make Lansing the best it can be. I continue to do my Government Properties Walk. And there's just so many excellent opportunities out there that people have engaged in to take care of the vulnerable populations, homeless, mental health consumers. There's many, many services out there to help them. I mean, I wanted to talk today about Crossroads Church. They're at 102 West Caesar Chavez Old Town, a really old brown brick church, very historic. It's just an excellent, excellent place. You know, for the last four years, I've been there. And it's just really a solid place that has helped my mental health. And anybody can come in on Wednesday for a free meal. And it's just, it's a great resource that anybody can come to. So it's 5:30 is prayer and worship, 6:30 is fellowship meal, 6:45 group time. It's just, they're welcoming, and I'm just seeing people just come in, you know, everybody off the street homeless, you know, people who are vulnerable that, you know, it's just, it's a welcoming place. And any of you, Mayor Shaw, and Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Cost, learning to pronounce your name now, Councilmember Hussein, Councilmember Garver, Councilmember Wood, Chris Swope, Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Spitzley, Councilmember Spatafor. I'm very happy that you are all here working so hard for the city. You deal with like the little details that I don't have the patience for, but I just come here to support you and thank you for today. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Mary Rosenberg, followed by Deborah Mulcahy.
Hi, Mary Rosenberg. I am a resident of the West Side, have been since 1985. I live on Genison, which is just down the street from the intersection where I've written my letter about, which is at North Genison and West Saginaw, which is where the fire station is that perhaps some of you are familiar with. Without very much notice, a few weeks ago, they changed that regular signal to a blinking yellow light going down Saginaw and a blinking red light going across Genison. Major consternation in the neighborhood. I had posted some information about this on our neighborhood Facebook page, and I've done sort of an informal tally of the comments. And there are people who do like it, I will tell you that, that don't have to wait for the light anymore before they zoom across Genison. But it's about three and a half to one against the change. We had a fatality there a week ago Sunday from a motorcycle going, God only knows how fast. I hazard a guess, I happen to do one of my walks, and I go in a westerly direction down Saginaw, so I'm facing the traffic. And as I said in my letter, I'm no speed expert, but I do think that they are going upwards of 70 miles an hour. It's insane. People that are living on the edge of the neighborhood up against Saginaw when they're trying to turn right onto Saginaw are finding it very dangerous to do so because the traffic is going so quickly. And trying to cross from, across Genison and cross Saginaw is also a very dastardly attempt because of not only the speed of the vehicles coming down Saginaw, but there are so many impediments to vision. The excuse or explanation from MDOT is ludicrous at best. One was that the people that are crossing with the light had a false sense of security. This is actually in writing in an email from MDOT when they are following the law and crossing with the light, that they had a false sense of security that they wouldn't be T-boned by traffic coming down Saginaw. And the other excuse or explanation for the change and why the old light isn't warranted is that there were so many rear-end crashes as cars were proceeding so quickly down Saginaw. So we need a better police presence for starters to be dealing with the traffic patterns. We have a lot of schools. We have three schools and a daycare. St. Lawrence is right there, which is now whatever, Sparrow, I get so confused with all the changing pieces. But there are still people from our neighborhood that are walking over to the hospital, and they need to be able to access the north side of Saginaw. And I would just hope that, I know that your input is somewhat limited because it's an MDOT issue, but I'm glad it's in Member Hussein's committee and that we get some good talking going with the state before they make this change permanent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Deborah Mulcahy and then Lynette Johnson.
Good evening, Council President Wood and members of council. I'm Deborah Mulcahy, and I wish to share, following up to what Mary Rosenberg has shared with you, my concerns in regard to this light change. This is not a new light. My more senior neighbors tell me that the light is older than me. It's old. Genison is a northbound street that runs through the west side of Lansing, and it's approximately two miles in length. MDOT is evaluating that light and lights from, on West Saginaw from Verlinden to Forest. When I first learned of the change, I didn't know if it was a good or bad change. I'm not a big fan of lights and signals and signs any more than necessary. However, what I did learn and have learned through the research I've been able to do is I now can say unequivocally, I do not support the change that has occurred. I support it going back to the way it was, green, yellow, and red. It has been very difficult, to say the least, to obtain information from MDOT. And in response to, why were we as neighbors not told of this change? I was told, well, the city of Lansing met with us. Well, the city of Lansing never conveyed this to neighbors. And it was in a newspaper, one of those legal notices. We all know how hard those are to read. The fact of the matter is that this, as Mary shared, the details of what was said, was done in an email to us as to why this light needed to be changed. But this is what I'd like to read to you, and this is in quotes from MDOT. Both crash trends are common with what would be expected at an intersection where the signal is present but not warranted, where the disadvantage of signalized intersection outweigh the benefits of signalization. Believe me, their logic, it defies logic. I have reviewed every UD10 crash report from 112004 to 12312021. They're all available on MSP site, every single one of them. There were a couple that were missing per accidents. It was not until, Mary- It was not until, Mary mentioned, the death of somebody a week ago that there had been a fatality near North Genesin and West Maryland at West Saginaw. I haven't seen the UD-ten from the motorcycle accident, so I don't know what caused that. In consultation with MDOT representatives, I learned that MDOT must conduct a ninety day study before making any light change, ninety days. So we're all assuming they've done their ninety day study. Based on FOIA data that has been provided to us, no studies or reports have been generated, but instead we have data showing one day in twenty seventeen and four days in twenty twenty. What were you guys doing in twenty twenty in November? COVID, do you think that's reflective of what we had? It's not. So I would ask that you, because you are allowed to participate in this decision, participate with the state of Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Lynette Johnson followed by Mike Carl.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Lynette Johnson. I'm also speaking on the, the issue that the two ladies before me spoke on. I live in the West Side neighborhood. I live on Drexel Road, which is probably about a block and a half from the intersection that they're talking about. And I know they brought up a lot of technical things. I would rather tell you a few more personal things, being that I live right there. I'm also not in agreement with changing that light to a blinking light. When Drexel comes up to Genesin, it comes up at an angle and there's about a twenty to thirty foot space before it hits Saginaw. When you're coming off Drexel, you have to stop there and wait. And when Saginaw's not stopping and it's going that fast, the traffic tends to back up on Genesin. And so you're stuck on Drexel, Genesin stuck because they can't turn right. And it really backs things up. So I personally, and I doubt I'm the only one, have taken to going to the intersection just west of that, that actually has the nor, the regular light. I was also concerned about the fatality that they're mentioning. I could see it from my house. I could see them putting up the, you know, the guards to block the view. It was disturbing. And the other side that I think Mary kind of talked about a little bit is when you're coming from Oakland on Genesin back into the neighborhood, there is a business there that has a sign and a bush and you cannot see the traffic coming until it's almost on top of you. And if they're speeding, that makes it very difficult to decide if it's safe to go or not. And as if fate were to come in, as I'm coming down here, I had two cars weaving in out of traffic almost hit me in that area when I was coming down here tonight. So taking out lights and making Saginaw go faster, I don't think is the wisest decision. That's just my personal opinion. You know, I think it should go back, there was nothing wrong with it the way it was. I think we're trying to fix something that's not broken and I think we should go back to how it was. So it's the, the flow of traffic is easier in and out of the neighborhood because that does affect us that live there. And also for safety reasons, I don't want to see any more fatal accidents from my house. So that would be very much appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Mike Carl followed by Erica Lynn.
Hi, this is one of those rare occasions. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for General Motors for a day off so I could address this. About a week ago, I watched HRCS with this red tag mention how no one has turned away from hotels. Few days later, an older lady named Tanya came into the store, fifty-nine years old, with colon cancer. She had called every agency to try to get housing. She got denied. My mom cried at her feet. I made a public video. Five minutes later, Kim Coleman called my mom. This is why the agencies call me dangerous, because I put human life before reputation. Sadly, she died on Sunday in a warm bed because we argued to keep her there. Other things that make me angry. In two thousand thirteen, I started the first community funded hotel program that cost the city zero dollars from two thousand thirteen to two thousand seventeen. This is an agreement that says that the Holy Cross pays homeless angels forty-eight dollars a night. This makes me sick. This was free for years. But it's also signed by Sharon Dade in two thousand seventeen as a Holy Cross director. Holy Cross didn't come to Lansing in two thousand seventeen. These are the kinds of wastes that I find. But the further I dig, like this Rent Smart program hosted by Joe McDonald, he's on the list of the landlords that are available to serve to the homeless population. So is Amber Paxton, Bree DeBong. These are people that used to work for the city and directly had access to people's HMIS data. I said this time and time again, I've met with you before, Andy, about HMIS data with two cruelly law attorneys that said, this is vital, it's federally mandated. I bring and present to the ad hoc council timeless copies of people's HMIS data that is blank, blank. One lady spent twenty-six thousand dollars of our taxpayer money in a hotel and it wasn't even on the documents. She couldn't qualify for federal housing because it wasn't there. The other thing that really gets me going is we spend so much money for families in hotels. Just two of them at the Casway Bay Hotel, nine months they've been there. Hundred and twenty thousand dollars it's cost our community. I used to do this for eight thousand dollars a person with zero cost to the city or agencies. It breaks my heart to see these agreements, to see these programs that are set up by people that we're supposed to trust and they put themselves out there so that they can profit. We have to do better. There's ways to save money, but we have to put human life ahead of, of profit. We have to, and this is now. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Erica Lynn followed by Mike Lynn.
Hello again, Erica Lynn, lifelong Lansing resident. And I'm actually really, really glad that I'm going after Mike Carl, who I fully support in everything that he just said. Real quick, I will say I'm very happy to hear about streaming the committee meetings. That's something that we, the People's Council of Lansing, we as individuals, America Twenty Life, we've talked about that a lot. We have a lot of apathy going on in our city. Apathy comes from a lack of civic engagement. This is how you create civic engagement, you start to build trust. With that being said, we cannot just do that, because I know I'm saying great kudos, and, you know, both can be true, and we still have to rectify with what's already been done and how we got into some of the places that we're at now. I really hope that you all do a deep dive into the budget conversations. Please do not feel pressured to pass another budget that is going to cause for future harm. Please, that is all I ask. It constantly feels like wash, rinse, repeat. It goes the same way. We know it is not right, we know it needs a deeper dive, we know that there's issues, but we feel pressured to pass it through. We've got to stop this cycle of destruction. Going back to what Mike Carl just talked about, we have a real issue with accountability right now in our city government at all levels, huge, huge issue. City employees, departments, this includes the mayor's office specifically, because that accountability is a layer of protection for us as citizens to ensure that our need, needs are being met. They are not being met. There is a whole huge, I can assure you, major, various vast segments of our cities, of our city who's, that, that's not happening. Their needs are not being met in so many different ways. We know that a lack of accountability leads to corruption, it leads to funds mismanagement, but most of all, it leads to incompetence. And we are, I am seeing levels of incompetence that I cannot believe. It literally is appalling and it is mortifying and it is terrifying because it has been allowed to continue and to go on. And that incompetence can go from the top down. We have to rectify with the fact that we have some serious incompetence going on. It is not personal, it is not attacking, it is transparency. And I am so tired of that conversation being led into that, that it is, it is attacking people, it is personal. It is not. It is something that we as citizens are entitled to because we can't do that, only you all can. We can't hold people tight, accountable for anything. We can only tell you and ask you to do so. But accountability is also necessary to ensure, again, that all citizens are hurt, not just those that have favor or know someone, all citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Mike Lynn.
We'll continue with my same long line of conversation. Accountability is a major piece of this, but I want to talk about the correspondence that I put in. And I'm hoping that anybody listening out here in the world and all of you are going to pay attention to this. For three years, I believe, since two thousand nineteen, when I put this federal lawsuit in, I was hearing rumbles from them closed sessions that this is a slam dunk, that we ain't got to worry about this. This is just one unhappy person. Even the mayor said that, it was quoted in the city pause. This is one unhappy individual, we held a training, we're moving forward. That's very interesting because that came up in the trial that we held the training. And it happened to be a year after the fact that the piece of paper that you guys seen that the HR department put out stated, this needs to be done immediately. The training needs to be held immediately. So that piece of paper gives recommendations for what exactly should have happened so that we wouldn't have ended up here. But the problem was, this mayor and this administration was in there by the time we found out that even existed. So they took a hard stance that I'm lying, that I'm just one unhappy person, as the mayor stated. And this city attorney, who works at his pleasure, decided I'm going to fight it that way. I'm not going to try to find any truth in what is being said or any liability in what is being said. I'm going to fight it from that perspective. And that's the ignorance that has gotten you to the point where you owe me now. One point two five million with interest and attorney fees with a motion that the attorney talked about, asking for five hundred thousand dollars. So let's talk about what they stand to lose or win with those motions. What they stand to win is possible new trial. They have to ask the same judge who sat through a five day trial, listened to all the evidence and allowed a jury to make a decision to, to, to admit that he made a fault. He made some issues because it's not based on fact. The only thing they can return is something that was done legally wrong. So they're asking the judge who overseen this thing to turn back around and say, yep, I'm going to give you a new trial. The problem with that thought process is that if you get a new trial, the same evidence stands. You still lose. So what are we standing to win here? We're both in a situation where we're taking a gamble. I'm taking a gamble on losing seven hundred fifty thousand dollars by saying I'll settle for that amount and whatever future gains I get from my wrongful termination. You know that's coming, or the work comp trial is coming up in two months. But I'm willing to make that stance and say, hey, I'm willing to give that up. They're not willing to give anything up. If they lose this, it's one point seven five million. Now they can file this off and go file more appeals and drag this out for more years and pay more outside attorneys and wrap the city up in all of that to, again, get a new trial. What do they stand to win by muling up right now? Other than not having to send a newspaper that we found ourselves having an issue here, we're paying out for a settlement. That's what they're standing to win. That's it, not financially. So, Spatterfor, I'm sorry to bore you, bro. It's okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
And with that, we are adjourned.